We can reconvene our meeting to open session. The Board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss a contractual matter and a personnel matter. We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introductions. Wendy Swinney, Willow Blair, Wendy Sampson, Jody Pearl, Holly Dunbar, Christine Beck, Catherine Maddock.
Jonathan Fish-Barnes.
And Judy Keighill. First up is approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the January 19th, 2022 regular board meeting.
Don't move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next, our meeting reports. First up is our superintendent's report.
Yep, thank you. I wanted to let everyone know that we did put out our request for proposals for universal pre-K. We released it on January 31st. It is posted on our website and we sent them to the five preschools who are on the approved list, the OCFS list. That's Bethlehem Lutheran Preschool, Bethlehem Preschool, Childtime, Tender Care, and Victory Reedies Program. So if there is someone else that we missed or is interested, they can take a look on our website, but they do have to be on that approved list. Also, I wanted to note, we are planning to hold a booster clinic on Friday between four and six at Eagle. We've sent registration links out for anyone interested. If the weather does not cooperate, hopefully it will, we do have a rescheduled date for Thursday, February 10th, again at Eagle between four and six p.m. So also, finally, I'd like to congratulate B.C. senior Tao Chia, who recently finished second out of more than 4,000 investors from across the state in virtual stock market competition. In three months, he grew his $100,000 to be worth more than $160,000. And it's the third year in a row he finished in the top three in New York State, so I'd like to congratulate him. And that is my report.
Anybody have any questions for Jody? Next is our board report. I had just a couple of things. First, I wanted to make sure everybody knew that the Lab School is hosting its annual Brooks BBQ on Saturday, March 5th. The event is open to all community members, but does require pre-ordering online by Sunday, February 27th. And information about ordering is on the district website. And I also make a note that in addition to the chicken option, there is also a vegetarian lasagna option for anybody who is a vegetarian and would like to participate. And I also wanted to make a note that I know the middle school is getting ready next week to put on their production of The Little Mermaid, Thursday through Sunday. So I wish all of the, I think it's cast and crew together, it's about 100 students, the best of luck with that. Anybody have anything else that they would like to add?
I wanted to mention, I forgot, last week, I think it was three weeks ago, I was able to join a presentation, I think the group was Moving Mindfully, that was put together by a parent group at Eagle Elementary School. And they made available a live Zoom with a woman who specializes in particularly educational settings and stretches and mindfulness exercises to sort of reset your brain for learning. And there were 40 or 50 families that zoomed in and sort of like stretched together. And she happened to call my kid out for eating ice cream, so that was embarrassing. But the rest of it was a really, really nice presentation and experience, and I was really pleasantly surprised. And I think it's recorded and available on the website, so I just would encourage people to take a look if you're interested in that side of wellness for students.
Thanks, Willow. I know that our policy committee meeting since our last board meeting had been canceled, but I believe there was a DDI committee meeting. And if somebody could report out what took place?
Sure. It was the second of three that are coming up. And it was a continuation of what problem-solving issues, conversations had been started in the previous meeting, so it was just a chance to map out and put in writing some things that we're looking at to solve some problems in our district. So it was just another step in in the process of making our district better.
Okay. Moving things forward.
Moving things forward, yeah. Sure. Some of the topics that we were talking about included mostly professional development for teachers. Then there were two other groups, starting conversations with common language. And what was the third one?
There was a student voice.
Student voices, listening more to student voices in the district. So those are the three areas that we were focusing on in that meeting.
Thanks, Wendy. Do we have anybody here from the Student Senate, from high school?
Hello. Is it possible? No? Okay, I'll just go squat. Hello, Board of Ed, sorry that I haven't been here the past two meetings, but Student Senate has been very busy. The backpack program is still going strong. We've moved our pickup drive time from now to 11:45 to 12:15. The first, that starts this Friday and will continue, I believe, for the rest of the year. We're also setting out regular backpacks on Thursday night, that's staying the same. We have approved many clubs, some of them being Sports Medicine, Minecraft Club, Esports Club, Dance Club, Crossword Club. And then HUSA, which is a national organization that we're bringing to the high school. It's similar to, sorry, it's similar to speech and debate or Science Bowl, Math and Librarians, et cetera, where we practice at the high school once or twice after school, and then they compete with other schools around the region and state. And if they do well, then they go to nationals. So we're really excited for that. They compete, the students competing are interested in healthcare professions outside of, like, as a future career, so they compete in healthcare terminology, medical procedures, et cetera. We also started looking into a varsity sports club, which would unify the student athletes at Bethlehem, give them more of a cohesive feel and give them more of a voice if they have a problem with a coach or the A.D., anything like that. We're just looking into that, that's not official anymore. And then the last thing that's coming up is a live Q and A with me and the Vice President with Hotel. We are going to, we have sent out a survey asking students problems or questions they have, and then we received, I believe, 21 questions or comments so far that we'll be looking at too and then giving the student body answers on within the coming weeks. And then we're also going to be doing a live Q and A for follow-up questions on those. That's also going to be happening, hopefully, within the next two to three weeks. That's all. Any questions?
Can you talk about the, I'm sorry. About the Q and A and the survey that was sent out? What type of a survey? What were you soliciting from the student body?
It was just an email sent out to all high schools, talking about the role of Student Senate, just informing them on what we do and what we're in charge of. We aren't having like a winter dance this year because of COVID. So like, some of the questions we're asking, why? What's the protocol on that? The bathrooms after school have been locked due to increase in vandalism since we've gone back from school. So students were asking why that is, if we can change that, when that privilege is being back, other comments about midterms because they were canceled, some college level courses. The effort at the high school still had midterms. So it's really just a way for us to further connect with the student body and have them feel like they have a voice as well as just like keeping the line of communication open.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any thoughts?
I just wanted to check for the backpack program. Do you still have sufficient supplies?
We do. We used all of the leftover food from the food drive that lasted us most of the month of January. And then Hannah Ford has been super generous in her donations in pallets. If you go to the B-Gym entrance, you'll see a bunch of cardboard pallets filled with food that I have to sort by the end of the week. So we're good on food. I project that like in two weeks or so, we'll have to dip into the Student Senate funding and go grocery shopping, which we haven't done in a while, but that's not a problem at all.
Thank you.
Any thoughts? Have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks, E.T.
Could we just, I just want to ask a quick follow-up before we have any more speakers on a couple, no, not, you're fine, thank you. What is the issue with the bathrooms being locked? Like, and do we know about that?
Nope.
Can we find out more about that?
I mean, I'm sure there's some that are open. I think some of them have been locked, but I can follow up, yeah.
Yeah. Curious about that. They can't go outside. And then the midterms.
They just make leaps.
Yeah, we have articulation agreements with colleges, and they dictate facilities, so they weren't actually midterms for the main instances, they were final exams for the course. For instance, Calculus III, two U of A's required to get a final. And our C and F physics was required, so it's because of the articulation agreements with the colleges.
Okay, so if it wasn't like a college course, they didn't have a midterm?
Correct. Yeah, we only have these three courses because of the articulation agreements, how to give either midterms or finals, and then for kids to be able to get the college credit.
Okay, thank you. And I think we have a couple of visitors from the middle school. If you guys need somebody to help you adjust the microphone, you can.
I'm Phoebe Dunbar, and I'm in sixth grade Hudson.
I'm Maxine Lee, and I'm in sixth grade Mohawk. Some student council updates is our Super Bowl starts next week. All donations support our backpack program and middle school hygiene product store. We have two spirit days coming up. On Monday, February 7th is pajama day. Monday, February 14th is where Valentine's colors. We are almost set for a musical performance of The Little Mermaid. Opening night is February 10th. Muhammad Ali was a knockout winner for Hero of the Month of December. His quote is, "Inside of a ring or out ain't nothing wrong with going down, but staying down, that's wrong." Our January nominees include Maya Angelou, Amanda Gorman, Colin K. Kaepernick, and Taylor Swift. Voting ends this week, and Taylor Swift is our current fund runner. We hope you have a great Valentine's Day and February vacation later this month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our presentation this evening. We have our State of the Schools report from Jody Monroe. Is this on? Good evening. So for tonight's State of the Schools, I'm going to address several topics. Some are recaps from prior presentations, and some will be new information. So we'd like to talk a little bit about some of our COVID impacts that we've experienced this year, our school climate survey, some initial results from that, an update on our strategic plan and annual goals. Also, to recap some of the transportation discussions and what our next steps are, a summary of our enrollment trends, and then this does, next week will kick off our budget development process. So we've talked a lot about COVID, so I don't want to spend too much time on that, but I wanted to provide just a general overview of our cases. We've had 930 positive COVID cases among students and staff since September 2020. And as you can see, this latest trend upwards is what we've recently experienced and why things have seemed a bit crazy. This does follow suit with national trends as well as Albany County and New York State trends. The good news is we're starting to see a significant dip, and we're hopeful that this will continue. So we're looking at some of our protocols in response. This has resulted in many changes to public health protocols for schools. We do try and communicate as much as we can regularly to students, staff, and families. We have worked closely with the Albany County Department of Health in contact tracing since 2020, and we've had, as I said, 930 cases. The mandate, the mask mandate in schools does remain in place through at least March 2nd, per the latest ruling, and I think there is some confusion about the state mandate for indoor facilities and what applies to schools. So we will be sure to communicate that with families as much as possible. We do have instructional supports in place. We did have to do, when you saw that large peak, we did offer live streaming because the amount of students who were absent from school from January 4th through the 28th, which we just concluded. But we will resort back to our tutoring when students are home for more than three days. And we are seeing much less absenteeism, so hopefully our students will be back in school and not have the absences that we experienced for a few weeks. The Albany County Department of Health, as well as the state, is no longer contact tracing, so we are not contact tracing and reporting that. However, we are responsible for looking at individual situations. For example, if there's a student or staff member who is at higher risk, or there's situations where masks are not worn, we do take a closer look at that and alert families. And we have tests that are acceptable for return to school for students who have symptoms. We have a lot of home test kits now. We've been receiving regular shipments. So if anyone does find that they're in need of a home test kit, if they contact their school, we can provide them one. And vaccine clinics, we've offered several of them. We've been fortunate to work with Jay Patel at Crestwood Pharmacy. We offered several clinics last spring. We also offered one in November at Eagle. And in December, we did the second dose. And as I said earlier, we're planning the booster clinic hopefully this week, and if not, it will be next week. This is our current vaccination rate by school as of January 2022. We are doing very well in regards to our vaccination rate among students. You can see the different percentages per elementary school. We are encouraging parents, if they've not reported, if they've had their child vaccinated anywhere other than our clinic, please report that to our school nurses so we can record that. And I want to just highlight some pieces of our school climate survey. We just administered this a few weeks ago. All members of the school community participate. We collected 2,750 surveys, a little over 1,800 students. We had about 660 parents respond and just under 250 staff members. The school climate survey is done to provide us with feedback, snapshots in times, perceptions of students, staff, and parents. It is part of our strategic plan and helps us make decisions regarding resources and staffing. So just to highlight, the school climate survey is rather large. It's from the U.S. Department of Education, but there's a lot of components of it. To summarize it, we could put them in three major categories of engagement, safety, and environment. And you can see the different subgroups for each of those. Engagement has to do with relationships and participation. Safety has to do with both physical and emotional safety. And environment has to do with not only academics, but do our facilities support a positive learning environment? So as I said, we just administered this, so we're still collecting and compiling some of the data. But the good news is that our preliminary data that measures positivity in the student survey is providing some results that we were, I would say, a bit surprised to see, but very happy to see. So the positivity reports, here's a couple examples of questions and engagements. My teachers helped me to feel good about myself. A positive response is measured as a student responding strongly agree or agree. In regards to physical safety, we want it to be disagree or strongly disagree because the response, or the question is, I sometimes stay home because I don't feel safe at school. So that's how the positivity data is collected. And this summarizes some of the good results. The last time we administered the full survey was in 2019-20, just before we shut down for COVID. And last year, if you recall, we did a very short abbreviated survey of about 10 to 15 questions, just for middle and high school students, to just get a snapshot. So when we administered this, we came back in the large spike of COVID. We were a little concerned at the negative responses we might get. And overall, you can see that the results were very positive and very similar to 2019-20. So when we hear a lot about students are struggling, I'm not saying students are not struggling academically, emotionally, all results are showing that our students are actually doing quite well. Did you have, do you want to stop?
Yeah, the only reason, the question I have is, we're using 1920, but COVID was here in 1922 at the tail end of it?
So this was done in January.
Before.
Right before we shut down. And last year, we didn't do this full survey. So that's the reason we're comparing 1920 to this year. In looking at safety, you can see that these are all very similar, or up a little. I need to dig down a little bit more into the substance abuse, because that's quite a difference in a positive result from where it was in 2019-20. So we'll look a little further into that. And in regards to our environment, you can see that these are again very similar. Physical environment, instructional, mental health is actually up a percent, and discipline, up 5%, is a good indicator that those are questions like students feel discipline is fair, they feel like they're being heard. It's not just discipline from the schoolwide, it's also from the classroom environment as well. And I'm going to circle back to the school climate survey as part of the strategic plan piece, because there's some metrics involved. But our strategic plan was implemented in 2018-19. The committee began with a new mission. We came up with four core values. The plan was paused in 2020 because of COVID. We did make revisions in 2021. We also made changes in streamline our metrics. We are at 53 metrics, which we use to measure and identify areas for improvement. And our first year of data for this new revised plan is the fall of 2022. So the four core values are in the areas of academic, community, character, and wellness. And you'll see that academics, we have 23 metrics we're measuring. Community, we have five metrics. Character, we have three metrics. And wellness, we have 22. And this is just a snapshot of our metrics. And you can see there's several data points we're using the school climate survey and parent climate survey to get these results. So circling back to the climate survey, these are the metrics under wellness. So the percent of students who reported they were happy to be at school, looking at 2019-20 to 21-22, you can see is the same. Students who reported that they feel they can talk about the importance of understanding their own feelings is up about 7%. And I think board members will know, we've done a lot of work with our social-emotional curriculum, and so we're hoping that that's where we're seeing some of that positive trends coming from. The percentage of students who report they feel that they belong is the same. And the percent of students who report they can talk to a teacher when they need to is also up about 3%. Again, hopefully, that's a result of some of our work with our mental health, emotional, in our social-emotional curriculum. The percentage of students who regularly participate in extracurricular activities, we know that students who are engaged in co-curriculars are more engaged in school. So that's surprising that it's the same, because we weren't able to offer as many activities the last couple of years, or many of them were virtual. But that's a good indication that students are staying involved. And the percentage of students who feel safe at school is down a little, which is not surprising, given the pandemic and some of the stressors that students have experienced. Did you have a question?
Yeah, quick question, just on the wellness goals and the data, what is the target? Did we set a target with our?
So we looked at our baseline data, and then we do have targets five years out. We had those established. Unfortunately, we're doing a reset with some of them.
Okay.
But we have a point we want to get to down the road.
Okay.
Jody? The percentages are very close. Is there a margin of error percentage that you have for this survey? Or can we assume that the close percentage is really, can we look at as really we're staying the same, we're staying the level?
Correct. That's what I would say. Because obviously, you're looking at this over time. I think, you know, if you're looking at it's gone up 5%, 4%, I would say, given the number of students we have responded, that's worth noting. If it's 1% or 2%, it's probably, I would say, staying the same.
Thank you.
Did we add the person who's taking the survey, how they identify, to break down some, like, talk about their feelings, to see how that breaks down?
So we have it broken down in the finer details by gender, by race, if they choose to note that. We also have, we can break down some of the data by their culture. So there are some things that are specific to that, but we do a little bit deeper dive into.
Okay. Great. Keep going?
Okay. So on to the goals. For academic goals, this is one of our larger areas. We're continuing with our five-year program reviews. We are getting, we've been using iReady for several years now, so we're using our data analysis more to help with classroom instruction. And as we've mentioned before, trying to streamline and align our curriculum and prioritize that to the New York learning standards. Also, looking at developing rigorous common assessments. We have some changes in our K-5 science program, so looking at the grading changes for that. In our K-12 wellness curriculum, this is an area that is quite a large task, because we're looking at how several disciplines fit into an overall K-12 wellness area. So for example, P.E., health, athletics, the DARA program, FACS, our social-emotional curriculum, library, and core academics, how do they all fit together so we're not leaving gaps in our wellness curriculum? Also, looking at the new computer science and digital standards, and looking at also, you had a presentation on this last week, the MTSS, Multi-Tierred System of Supports.
Jody, may I ask a question?
Yep.
On the, I'm sorry, the wellness curriculum. On the curriculum, I'm sorry, the wellness curriculum reviews and the other reviews that are happening here, are these happening across the academic year? What's the timeline on these? I know there was some discussion of reviewing the DARA program specifically. I'm just wondering where we can look for updates there.
So our goal is to do most of this work within a year's time. There are some areas that end up taking a little bit longer, in which case they would continue into next year's goals. But generally, most of these are data points or reviews that we would have done by the end of the school year or over the summer, and can provide updates in the fall.
Great, thank you. Do you anticipate, based on that, now that the DARA program assessment will be completed this year, or is it where?
If not by the end of the school year, probably through the summer, before the start of the next school year would be the goal. Yep. Looking at some of our mid-year updates, so you can see, these are areas where we have developed and are using common, either formative or summative assessments. And just to clarify, formative assessments are a variety of methods that teachers use to evaluate students ongoing throughout the year. Summitive are areas we're talking about learning at the end of an instructional unit, or a midterm, or a year-end exam. So these are the areas that have, at this point in the year, have been developed. Our K-5 science is looking at new grading rubrics, which will be reviewed by the science cabinet. There are performance expectations and skills, and these rubrics will be designed for easy and quick use by teachers while students are completing their science. And engineering is an increased component of the science program at the elementary schools. Our wellness curriculum, I just mentioned, looking at completing curriculum templates, our health and FACS curriculum maps have been updated. We have reintroduced the Coaching Boys into Men program, which we talked about in the past. And also working with our Equinoxes, working with training on our coaches, and our students' assistance counselors doing check-ins for our female student athletes. We have a little short video here on our tech tips. We have all of our new view sign of whiteboards, which are these, installed at all of our elementary schools, which were done in December, and we're continuing to doing some training. And here's a quick little video that Stephanie Berlin put together, just to get a glimpse of some of the tech tips that she's offering to teachers. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the very first one-minute tech tip video. For this first one, I decided to address a really common problem, but I hope it's going to help a lot of you work more efficiently. So be honest, when was the last time you restarted your device? The most common answer I get to this question is that it's been a long time, because you have a lot of tabs open, and you don't want to lose where you are in those tabs. And I completely get that. So I'm going to show you how to change a setting in Chrome, so that when you close your Chrome browser and you reopen it, all those tabs will reopen where you left off. So to do this, we're going to go to the upper right-hand corner. We're going to come down, we're going to click on the survey first, then come down and click on settings. On the left, you will see where it says on startup. Click that. And fill out the one in the middle, where it says continue where you left off. And that is truly all you have to do. So now, you can close your Chrome browser, you can restart your computer, and update it if it needs it. And then when you open Chrome again, you'll be right back where you left off. I hope you found this useful. Take an eye out for more one-minute tech tips and resources to follow if you need them. Okay. Welcome to the very first one-minute. Okay. And on to some accolades. Pretty much every week, I've been able to highlight some of our students, and it just amazes me that even with the closures since March 2020 and all the limitations, you can see that our students continue to just perform in many different areas and receive high accolades in our just deserving of their persistence and their dedication to a lot of different activities. And our staff have been tremendous during all of this, and I know that we're continuously ranked very high. You can see that we're also ranked nationally, and much of this is because of our staff. And we've just been tremendous through all of the challenges. They've been flexible, and I think part of the positive results we also see with our student surveys is a result of the staff that work here every day. Moving on to character, one of our areas of focus is equity and cultural responsiveness and doing more professional development, some sexual harassment professional development, which we deemed equally important. And then obviously, our continuous work with character initiatives for students. So some of what we've done this year in regards to these areas is implicit bias training, some cultural proficiency training, which Harriet Glasner, who we've been working with for a few years now, have worked with our ELA faculty to work on helping all students feel belonging. Curriculum instruction groups at the high school, a book study at the middle school, and our social studies in the ELA teachers have also been meeting regularly with students and graduates to discuss relevant DEI topics. So some of what we've accomplished to date, our staff did complete training in September, as noted. Counselors have also continued to provide training on sexual harassment. In student participation, we have our middle school character student committee who meets regularly. There's 800 students at the middle school who took the character strength survey. Elementary schools have ongoing character-specific programs. And our high school has recognized 99 students so far, and there'd be the change recognition. And this, just to go back and highlight the work we've been doing on diversity, equity, inclusion. This work began as far back as 2016, '17, where we had a small steering group to begin looking at this area. In 17, '18, we created a district action plan. In 18, '19, we began really more formal discussions about this, looking at some of our data. And then in 19, '20 is when we began working with Generation Reading, where we involved more staff so that all schools had representation. We did our equity walks and did work with our curriculum. And we also did a board training that year. Seems so long ago. In 2020, '21, we did a lot of things via Zoom, and that's when we offered some focus groups. We did the bridging the divide sessions, and we launched the program at the high school where we're connecting with alumni and current students. And also, the ELA and social studies curriculum has been an ongoing work in progress. And in this year, the board established the district-level equity and inclusivity committee, which Wendy was talking about. We have Harriet, a consultant, to continue to work with us on our action plans, and continuing to work on professional development in several different areas. And looking at community, one of our big areas of focus is our outreach to families who have needs. We've been really investing in that area for a number of years now. And one of the things that we talked about in the summer was because it's been very limited as to what families could come into our buildings for, to try and do video outreach to send messages out to families and show off some of our school facilities. So in the areas that we've been able to address, our caring and sharing program has been a huge success, and it was a huge success this year again. We collected almost $15,000 in cash donations. Ninety families received food and gift cards. And then we also have gift cards available for needs throughout the year. Our school counselors know when to reach out to ask for that assistance. We've also improved our home language calls to families who speak other languages than English, so we make sure that they're engaged with the school. So this is a short video of our students at the high school getting ready for our holiday caring and sharing program. This is a perfect example of the holiday spirit. We talk a lot about the holidays without giving and not receiving, and this is a perfect example of that. Anyway, that we can help the holiday together, it helps, everyone deserves to have a nice holiday, and all their families. My favorite part is probably today, when it all comes together. I love seeing students who know they wouldn't be involved with things like that, realize like how amazing it feels to give back and do things better. It shows how amazing of a community at that point we have, all across the district, to give back what we can. Everyone is able to do a couple things, and that can go one way for a family. This is a perfect example of the holiday spirit. Some other videos that we've put together and sent out is the bus driver video, early on in the year, what our capitol project does. Bus driver thank you. We did a piece on homecoming. The football team that honored some teachers. We did a piece on elementary students connecting with students in Kenya, the caring and sharing, which you just saw. And then the stock was on advice for peers and investing. And we'll continue to do that, eventually, hoping that we will have our doors more open. But this was a way to try and reach out to families, just make sure they were aware of what we were doing in our schools. And our rebranding, so we have new district logos, so you're probably seeing it more and more. But just to talk about what the rebranding means, the eagle in this is now looking forward instead of back. The core values are also reflected in the district logo. You can see over here that for community, that's encircling the eagle, and the different colors represent academic, character, and wellness. The colors are standard, and the fonts are improved for accessibility. The new athletics logo was unveiled at homecoming, and they really wanted the eagle to be more fierce. They have standardized icons and banners across all the district's social media platforms by February of, it is February, now. An eagle in the circle will eventually be phased out over time. And here's a snapshot of our new website that will be launched in the next couple of weeks. And one of the biggest changes you'll notice is, aside from it being much more streamlined and user-friendly, it also needs all the accessibility, which was a priority for us to be able to do. So these are all the areas that it will address, and we're making sure that anything that is on our website moving forward will be accessible to all our community members. And on to our next coming project, our 2021 capitol project. Just to recap, we haven't talked about this in a while, but this is being worked on in regards to the designs. You can see that the high school will be getting just about 40% of the work, the middle school a little over 25%, the elementary schools will be a little over 35%, and other areas will be just under 8%. And these are areas just highlighting all of the discussions and the work that we've identified for the capitol project. And on to wellness, mental health and social emotional learning, we've talked a lot about. That is one of our areas of focus, supporting our staff's mental health and wellbeing, the tiered system of supports for student attendance, and reinvigorating our green initiatives. So some of what we've done so far, we have increased our tier-one lessons at the K-5 level and targeted our tier-two groups. We talked about this in our last presentation. Our health teachers and social workers have implemented the social emotional curriculum in grade eight. Grade seven FACS have done lessons on healthy and unhealthy relationships. And in grade nine, our PE and counselors are providing lessons on healthy and unhealthy relationships, as well as bystander intervention and consent. In MTSS, this is a, we heard a lot about this at our last meeting, it's a proactive framework to help teachers and staff support students with academics and behavior and attendance, and providing staff with resources and staff development to support their own mental health. We are planning a superintendent's conference day in March, which will address district wellness for students as well as staff. In implementing a tiered system of supports to monitor student attendance, we do have a new process in place to work on that. However, with all of the COVID absences, it's been a bit tough to implement. So when absenteeism becomes more traditional, we will, we have a plan to address that. And looking at our green initiatives, we are still hoping to get our electric buses. April still, maybe April, hopefully April. We did host a recycling event in November and have another one planned for April of 2022. We are doing composting back at the middle school and high school, and the collection of plastic film in kitchens, both at the middle school and high school as well. And we've talked a lot about mental, emotional, and health in our social emotional curriculum. This is a picture, if you have elementary students, you've probably heard of the zones of regulations and the different colors. And here's an activity one of our social workers, Frank Daly, is doing, using a physical activity with the different colors that students have been taught. And here's a picture, remember the electric bus, Julie, that came this summer? So we were able to purchase five electric buses. We have the infrastructure in place now to support up to 25, as approved as part of the capitol project vote. And we're expecting delivery, hopefully, in late spring. We haven't heard anything different at this point. And then just to focus on transportation, because we've talked a lot about transportation, and we do want to get feedback from the community. So everyone knows there's a nationwide bus driver shortage. This is prominent in every district. We had at one point 87 drivers prior to COVID. The goal, we would like to be within 65 to 70 drivers, and we currently have 58 drivers as of January 2022. That has resulted in us reverting back to the three-tier bus time, as well as not being able to maintain the high school later start time. Buses are full, and we do have some restrictions on day variant schedules, as well as getting students to some of the athletic events or extracurricular activities. And looking at our bus driver demographics, you can see that many of our bus drivers are older, so we need to be mindful of those who may retire, and the challenge it is to replace those bus drivers. So looking at what is our plan, we do have a three-year plan to address the driver shortage. One of them, we worked on this year, and we're able to get an agreement to increase driver compensation. We're looking at expanding the walk zones, and I have revised maps to show. And then finally, looking at modifying bell times for 2023, '24. So we did enact the driver compensation. We increased our driver pay from $1,967 an hour to $23,60 an hour, established a six-hour minimum. We do have a referral bonus for staff who recruit new drivers, and a $1,000 retention bonus for new drivers after one year. And in eligibility, this is what we will be seeking additional community feedback. Our current walk zones for elementary schools are, everyone is eligible, middle school is a half mile, and the high school is one mile. The potential walk zones that you'll see with the maps, elementary can go up to three-quarters of a mile, middle school is up to one mile, and high school is one and a half. I want to remind everyone that the New York State limit is two miles for elementary, middle school, and high school for three miles. And what this does, if you look at that last column with the estimated change in riders, by using those distances, you're able to reduce routes at all three levels. And because we have a three-tier system, you need to have that reduction at every level in order to actually gain flexibility with the drivers. So the maps are revised. So the maps are revised from the prior presentation. And essentially what we will do is we'll share these out with the community with a list of the specific streets. These are, I think there's still a few that are not listed. And if you're within that shaded area, you would no longer, or you, some of, you would not be eligible for transportation. So we will be putting these out to the community to get feedback from them. So this is Esmer. Glenma, I just want to make a note that there is something that Judy talked about with the child safety zones. And much of Glenma would fall into that child safety zone. And we'll talk further about that at the transportation update in a couple of weeks. This is the map for Hamago. This is what Slenderlins would look like. This is the high school. And this is what the middle school would look like. So what we'd like to do next is provide these maps and information to all of our families. We would ask families to provide us with feedback. If anything doesn't look right on the maps, if they have questions about them, if they have concerns, to send that back to us. We would review that feedback from families and it would be presented, what we have at least, as part of the transportation budget on February sixteenth. And then if changes are going to be made, the board would have to make that change, adopt that by March sixteenth. You have a question?
When we send, I assume we're going to send this out by email. Can we also provide information to families about where we currently have crossing guards?
Yes.
Is that possible?
Yes.
Because I'm thinking that there may be some families that maybe they, they may not know if their kid now takes the bus. They may not be aware that there's a crossing guard at a particular intersection. And that might, that would be useful to know.
Yep, that would be, that's a good point.
Judy, excuse me, is there anywhere on those maps where you have one side of the street qualifies and the other side doesn't? Or are we making sure that if we have a street, that both sides of the street would get coverage?
I think both sides of the street would get coverage, but I'd have to probably talk to transportation to make sure there, if there are any anomalies with that. Because one of the things we have, we have to comply with the distance as well. So we would have to take a look at that, but I'd have to follow up with transportation on that.
If there is, I think we should be real clear to the public as to which streets those are, if there are any.
Right, that's a good point. So the board would have to make any changes by March sixteenth, because this would have to go out for the community vote at the May seventeenth budget vote. So that's really all with those. And again, our plan is to get that information out to the community by Friday. So they have time to take a look at them and hopefully people will send us comments or feedback so we can share that out at the next board meeting. And looking at enrollment, we work with the Capital Region Planning Commission, we've been working with them for several years now. So compared to two thousand six, seven, our enrollment has declined just slightly over twenty percent. However, after years of declining enrollment, we are starting to see a stabilizing trend. Enrollment in grades nine, twelve are still expected to decline slightly, but you'll see that in K eight, there's a little bit of an increase. Again, nothing significant, our total enrollment is projected to be just four thousand one hundred twelve students. And in two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, projected around four thousand eighty-seven. One of the things that in the planning commission's report is that there have been lower than normal birth classes in twenty twenty, in twenty twenty-one due to the pandemic that they refer to as the baby bust. So it could cause some variations in that, but this is the projections they have at this time. And you can see our overall enrollment for several years, you can see we were at the peak in two thousand six, seven at fifty, just almost fifty-two hundred and down to four thousand one hundred and fifty-one in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. This is just a look at the birth data. And the building permits issued, so there is a building moratorium in the town of Bethlehem, so that could affect the number of new units. Many of these are, there are single-family homes, what you can see in the orange, that's three or more permits and two units. And this is for the town of Bethlehem as well as the town of New Scotland. And on to finally the budget. Obviously our goal, when we begin the budget process and we end the budget process, is our expenses will be equal to our revenue. Our current budget is just over one hundred and two million dollars. What we received from the tax levy last year and the use, we did, just a reminder, we did use just under four hundred thousand dollars of our fund balance. And a snapshot in our budget history, our ten-year average budget increase is, has been one point six four percent. And our tax levy history, you can see there was only one year, back in two thousand twelve, thirteen, where we were above the cap, every year since we've been either at the cap or below. And our ten-year average tax levy increase is one point nine eight percent. And the timeline for our budget development, we begin next week, or not next week, two weeks, February sixteenth with our preview and transportation and technology will be presented. Then we move on to operations and maintenance and athletics. And March sixteenth is the instructional staffing and special education program. And by April sixth, we would need to have final decisions and adoption of the budget. The hearing of the budget would be May fourth, meet the candidates night would be May eleventh. And finally, the budget vote would be May seventeenth. And below there, you can see when certain requirements need to be finalized. Property tax report calls the deadline for board of ed candidates on April eighteenth. April twenty-second, military ballots are distributed. And then between May fifth and eleventh, the newsletter and budget notices are mailed. And any questions people have additional to what's already been asked?
Catherine?
A couple of questions which are related to the, I mean, just thinking about as you went through here. You mentioned, is either slide thirty or thirty-one in the academic update, providing Equinox training for coaches, I believe? I'm just not familiar with that, I was wondering if you could speak to that a little?
The coaching boys into men program and the female counterpart to that is through Equinox. So they're the group that developed that program. So they do the training with our coaches on the program itself. And some additional information that's helpful for coaches to be aware of would be working with our student athletes.
Cool, thank you. And then it was either slide fifty or two or fifty-three, we're talking about the green initiatives and I was wondering if conversations have started within the district to pull back on single-use plastics and disposables? And when we need transition back to reusable spoons, forks, like, what bunch of men?
I know that Elisa Izer is very mindful of that, particularly in food services. So I know that when we can transition back to that, we will. And I know Mr. Wilford is passionate about that. So that would be our goal, hopefully. It'd be great if we could do that by next year, if we can, but yes, absolutely.
If the state, oh, sorry, if I can, is that a, is that a requirement from state, is that a policy, a protocol that the district has adopted? Are we waiting on permission to, to shift back?
I think there were some recommendations when COVID first began for the single use was a recommendation that we adopted. But I'd have to go and look at to see if that's continued or not, I really don't know.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And just to, to be explicit, I would love to transition away from the single use tomorrow, or maybe last week, but certainly soon as possible.
Yeah.
Are you in the wrong set? Okay, did you have some questions?
Before you go ahead, I just want to remind all of our visitors that you are required to wear a mask covering your nose and your mouth while you're in the building. If you do not have one, we can find one for you. If you are not willing to do so, we do need to ask you to leave. Thank you.
Well, the diversity and equity, and I know I've asked this question before, are we trying to develop any type of baseline from where we started to where we're going? Just to kind of gauge if we're making headway? Like I know in our curriculum, obviously we've introduced more educational tools and curriculum, but in other areas, what are we looking to do to develop that kind of baseline?
Yeah, I'll just talk a little bit too about the different areas. So I know when we talk about DEI initiatives, a lot of times we get kind of caught up in it. The bulk of those efforts revolve around, say, race, and that's not the case. So I just want to be clear that, you know, there's a lot that goes on here. So, you know, one main area is, you know, educational equity itself. We want to make sure that our tasks and our texts are appropriate, appropriately complex. We want to make sure that students all have exposure and ability to access higher-order thinking skills. We don't necessarily think of that as equity, but it is, right? So if we, I talked about this a little bit when we did our MTSS presentation, right? Is that we want to make sure that all students have access to grade-level standards and we're able to push them above when possible, right? So there's equity in what's even available to students. Another thing, and this came up when we spoke of, is student voice, right? Making sure that students have spaces where they can have discourse and provide their own perspective, their opinions, personal response, argumentation. And so like an example of that that might not be glaring is like the new math program that we implemented at the K five level is all about discourse. So if you talk to elementary students about, you know, the way that they share, the way that they approach a problem, the way that they sort of work built upon each other's thinking, right? Like those aren't things that you necessarily think of as being part of an equity initiative, but they are. Like the science, the hands-on science kits, the next-generation science standards are purposefully written with an equity lens. So, you know, a lot of time the focus sort of gets turned to, for good reason, like EOL and social studies, because that's where we start talking about content and we start talking about the choice of texts. But our equity efforts really do go above and beyond this, I just want to be careful that we, I mean, it's a pretty broad umbrella and we've done a lot of work in those areas. So we'll be tracking sort of those things too, like what changes have we made to the way content is delivered? What changes have we made to the way students have access to curriculum? Like in our example, I've talked about our AP equity report, right? The percentage of our students that have access to AP, we don't have closed enrollment. We let students self-select AP courses. And then finally, yes, it does get into the diversity of texts and some of our social justice initiatives. So for instance, when you're, you know, reading To Kill a Mockingbird, looking at it through a diverse lens or anti-racist lens, just a different perspective on some of the texts that we've looked at. So there's a lot of, it's not necessarily numerical data, but it's more qualitative, right? Where we're looking at, these are the changes that we've made across areas. As you know, I'm also looking at our policies, right? Our academic policies right now, reviewing those to make sure, again, not just equity in what's being taught, but equity in access.
And that's what I was referring to when I was talking about like gauging improvements for desired effects. So it's not necessarily a number metric or anything like that, it's a timeline. Like, so this is what we started with back in two thousand and sixteen, this is what we've added two thousand, just so we have a gauge that we're making those strides.
And some of the, some of the pieces, we actually do have some data on. So on the school climate survey, there was a question that students have, I can't remember exactly the wording, but the resources and materials used in the classroom reflect my culture. So that's, hopefully we'll start to see a more positive trend and we are able to break that down by the different groups of students. So we're hopefully that we see that move in a positive direction. We're also looking at for our data, our suspension rates, internal and external, and our attendance rates. We've historically seen higher rates of suspensions and absenteeism from special education students and or ENL students. So focusing on what initiatives are we putting in place to improve in those particular areas, I think is data that's important to track. And things like the website, making that accessible for all users is, you know, it takes some work, but it's worth the effort and it affects, impacts the entire community. So there's some of those not so measurable, but hoping to see progress. And then they're all data points that I think are important to make sure we're mindful of.
Yeah, I just think it was going to be helpful when we have the discussions on diversity and equity, that we can show that in some sort of form. And then you answered the other question, so some of the data that we're using in these surveys, you're going to work on, like how are we going to prove, and the one I was looking at was, we talked about it in two thousand and nineteen where participation was at seventy-four percent. And what are we going to try to do to get that up? And now it's still relatively flat, but obviously we know all. But are we going to look to like increase that this summer when you're doing summer development? Like is that like one of the goals?
And part of what you'll see as part of the budget presentation is some proposed additions for some additional co-curricular activities to bring in students maybe who haven't participated in a co-curricular activity because they haven't found something that is of interest to them. So hopefully by diversifying those options, we'll be able to attract more students to participate. So that is absolutely a goal, we do have a targeted goal to increase that over here.
That one was just an easy one to pick out. On Catherine's line on the consent, so I think, I can't remember exactly what you said with the coaching. You weren't going to do, continue to do the program with the coach?
Enhance it. Enhance it. Part of that, so part of all of that will be built into the K twelve wellness program, because that is a part of that. So right now, we've been adding some things as we go along based on identified needs. But the goal is to map that all out, so we have a comprehensive K twelve wellness program that includes not just, you know, what do kids get in health class in eighth grade and in, in high school? What can we do at every level to make sure that we're addressing the areas that we know we need to make sure that we're addressing?
Yeah, because I think we were all concerned, like, it was a couple, I think it was two years ago, I don't think it was last year or before, where we were concerned that there wasn't enough instruction by the time you were taking seventh grade health. It needed to start happening right before that. And I think whenever we do that discussion, if we can just show like where we're making those curriculum, because we all seem very interested and curious about like where those changes were. I had a Dave question just on the science curriculum. Was the rubric change because of state changes or you just realized there was certain things that needed?
I presented them a few minutes ago when I did my academic update. Pretty much every curriculum area has new standards. But you've actually seen some of the kits, we were ahead of the game in implementing them. As you know, Jean-Garyne, who's our K twelve science supervisor, is very involved at the state level. She actually trains throughout the state, she helped develop the standards. And so we're very fortunate, we're ahead of the game in getting the kits. So now it's, we have all of the kits implemented at all of the grade levels K five. So now they're creating some more specific rubrics to help teachers just assess the students as they're working through the kits. So that everybody's assessing the same way and able to interpret what the students are getting out of the kits the same way. That's what it is, yeah.
That's all I have.
I would just add to the comments about the DEI work, I know this has come up before, but since we're redoing the website, if there's any way that we can put some information about work that the district has been doing on the website in an easily findable spot.
I'm sure we can find a spot for that.
So that the, I mean, I think a lot of times there is interest from the community and people are unaware of things that the district has already been doing. And it would be great for them to be able to find that on our newly redesigned website.
Yeah, like the timeline, like even if we put something on, on the website in that area, it would be great.
And I, you know, I put that together when I was presenting to the board of regions. And then when I went back and I looked at it, I'm like, wow, two thousand sixteen, seventeen. Like I didn't even realize that we started it that many years ago, so it was good for me to kind of review that.
That's awesome. Thank you for this comprehensive review and putting it together too.
Any other questions? Catherine has one.
I just want, I just wanted to say, just looking, you know, you've said a lot of important stuff in here and I don't want to get stuck in the website, but just because this is one of the ways that we all interact with the district, just looking at the little sneak peek that's here, I'm like, oh. sneak peek that's here, I'm like, oh, this is so nice. And I know that so much work goes on behind the scenes for this kind of thing, so just thanks to all the folks who are involved in that.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks. All right, next on our agenda tonight is a recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have any visitors who would like to address the board, now is your time to come up to the microphone and state your name. I'd like to just give my couple reminders. The board will listen, but does not debate issues or enter into Q and A. And we cannot permit discussion of individual district personnel or students, and we ask that you please be brief, and everybody has a three-minute maximum.
I brought some props.
And if you could please pull a mask up over here.
Really, even to present? This is the kind of COVID paranoia I'm looking to address tonight. My name is Doug Lloyd, Class 1996. Choose to raise my two children here in Bethlehem, because Bethlehem is the leader in education, always has been, and I'd like to see it going forward. I'm an engineer. In my professional career, I've fielded a variety of systems, put unattended surveillance systems through environmental quality, air conditioning grounds. I've upgraded our trap systems from military-operated weapons platforms at nuclear power plants around the United States. I've installed perimeter surveillance systems at high-value targets like Boeing Air Force Base in New York grounds. In my own business, I've rapid prototype remotely operated weapon systems. I've got software from NASA that's used on PADS 388, 38B, and I've built cellular data offloading programs. All of these systems are far more complex than the basic masking and filtration concepts that we're attempting to accomplish with our kids. These are masks that my kids have been forced to wear for the past 18 months now. They're really nothing more than spit shields. This material is not designed for, nor is it capable of stopping any airborne pathogen, such as COVID-19. All these mask variant material, some are real thin, they're really breathable, because they're thin and not going to stop any pathogens. I've had to confiscate masks that are so thick that you can't push air through them. Of course, your air just comes around the side, and it's not filtering anything. This is an N95 mask, or respirator. It'll actually seal around your face. Has a check valve on it. It's a one-way valve. So when you exhale, your air is unfiltered, going out the check valve, and when you inhale, your air goes through the filters. The reason they have a check valve is you wouldn't be able to breathe in the mask, and if you were pushing your air through the filter all day long, like we're trying to do with this mask, it would become contaminated quite quickly. And this just type of mask and its design proves that these masks don't do anything, right? The air is going to follow the least path of resistance, and that least path of resistance is, you know, any rural area bigger than the filtration capability of the mask. So everything you wear, it's going around it. This is a military gas mask, without eye protection, actually capable of stopping an airborne pathogen. We can't have our kids wear these all day. My sons have been taught that these cloth masks protect them, and as an engineer, that's difficult for me to swallow. They've been taught that if they don't wear these masks, they're dangerous to others. They're worried about killing their grandma. That's quite the burden to put on our kids, when they offer a little more protection than really a spit shield. You know, I recommend that Bethlehem be a leader and teach the benefits and risks, and give our kids free choice. I'm not asking for everybody to rip the mask off. A lot of people, I'm really just asking for some common sense and some choice for our kids. Now, I understand our hands are tied here, right? There's a lot of parents that want everybody to wear a mask, and there's also a lot of funding coming in through Esser and ARC, you know, we're on track, we're at 1.8 million coming in, and those funds are tied to, you know, forcing kids to wear masks. My children are also unvaccinated. They're eight and 10, and they're going to stay that way until I'm satisfied with the safety data. Vaccine for their age group five through 11 has been available for three months. So any children that have received this vaccine, they are the safety data. They are the clinical trial.
I do need to ask you to wrap it up, okay?
Sure. Yeah, I'd like to see Bethlehem be the leader in free choice and not implement any vaccine mandates. There's plenty more. I'll leave this with you guys to review. I mean, there's, I do like to, because of the board, educate our parents. I mean, there's serious misconceptions going around right now on this vaccine. There is no FDA-approved vaccine available. It is a different product. The only vaccine that's available, that's FDA-approved, is Clonaddy, that is not available in the United States. So anybody who has received a vaccine, under the guise of being FDA-approved, is really the EWA product. A federal judge has...
If you would like, if you have additional written comments, if you'd like to leave them with us, we'd be happy to take a look at them. We could do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a child in a middle school. And I'm here tonight to follow up on a question that I posed during the superintendent's recent question and answer. And I asked whether the district had an expectation that the COVID vaccine would become mandatory for public schools, and what the board's, what the district's position on that was. And I understand that, you know, the response, I understand the response, that the state will make its decision, and then the school district will have to comply. But I didn't really get an answer to the second part of my question as to whether or not the district had a position on whether or not the vaccine should be mandatory. So I'm here to ask you to consider that the mandates should not be imposed on our children, that they're not necessary, and the state will do well not to impose them. At one point, I might have said that this view is in the minority, but a recently reported Quinnipiac poll found that a majority of people felt vaccines should not be mandatory for the children, the COVID vaccine. And more importantly, nearly 70% of parents with school-aged children felt that their children should not be forced to be mandated. This crossed party lines and vaccination status. So even parents who were willing to get their children vaccinated believed it should not be mandatory. I recognize the state will make its rules, but you can try to influence that decision, just as parents can come to the forum, such as we are tonight, to try to influence your decisions. And your hands really are not tied, because you still have your voices. It would take a long time for me to fully explain why I think this vaccine is not right for my particular child. And I am not anti-vaccine. I'm vaccinated. I've had my booster. So has my husband. My two college-age children are vaccinated. I'm pro-vaccine, but anti-mandate, and I have real valid concerns about the data that has come out from the CDC, from the drug makers themselves, and numerous studies, both here and in other countries, and our own personal circumstances. Some argue that children must be vaccinated to protect others, that unvaccinated people are putting others at risk, and no one should be able to put others at risk. We now know that even vaccinated people are putting other people at risk. So the argument fails in that way. And more importantly, it fails because the vaccines themselves are not without risk. I'll say that again, the vaccines themselves are not without risk. Therefore, forcing someone to be vaccinated is putting them at risk. That risk should be a personal decision. And I admit, the risk is very low. There is also a near zero chance that my child will be seriously ill or die from COVID. He has survived greater threats than COVID already, and he'll face greater threats than COVID for the rest of his life, without even doing anything crazy or radical. The risk versus hypothetical benefit calculation for vaccinating my son is pretty much a toss-up. And I think that decision should be left to me, my family, our doctors, and not the bureaucrats. People argue that other vaccines are mandated for school. This is true, and my kids have had them all. But COVID is nothing like those other illnesses, and the COVID vaccine is nothing like those other vaccines, whether we're talking about dosing regimen, efficacy, long-term studies, and known possible risks. It's an apples and oranges comparison. I will close saying, I do not judge any parent who chooses for or against getting their child the COVID vaccine. I say nothing about you based on that choice. It's none of my business. I ask for the same respect and urge BCSD to communicate your stand on this issue to parents, and to find out from parents in the district what the parents think about this. Should it be officially proposed, and I know Governor Hochul has spoken publicly about this, I would like the district to know how the parents feel and to be able to advocate for those parents, because I think that's part of your mandate as well. Even if those of us who are against a vaccine mandate are in a minority, remember that this nation has prided itself on giving voice to the minority, and many in this country enjoy rights and liberties not enjoyed elsewhere because of that principle. I'm a veteran, proud veteran, as is my husband, my sister, my father, so defending that principle comes easily to me, and I hope it will come easily to you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would also, if your comments are written, and you would also like to submit them, you're welcome to do so.
Anybody want to read the rest of my letter?
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Moving on, Item Six, Action Items. A, Finance Action Items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through three.
Second.
Any discussion?
Judy, do you want to explain the reason for this?
Yeah. The Dolphins have been using the district facilities for many, many years, and they are charged typically in our Tier Three rate. They did what they considered a good deed this year. One of the other area clubs out of district had closed down, so they had allowed some of those other students to participate. Because of that, it pushed their non-Bethlehem participation too high. It pushed them into a higher fee classification, so where they would have been billed $12,000 initially. So they set up their program and all of their charges to their students at that lower rate that they had always had, and then inadvertently, because of their participation with fewer Bethlehem students, would have gone from a $12,000 bill up to close to $40,000. So of course, they're running their program, they've already billed their families, so they didn't really have an easy way. And it's certainly a material change to the fee structure that they had put out, so they requested that we consider this one-time deviation, given their circumstances. They are newly aware and reminded of the 75% threshold in the policy and the differing fee classes, and they understand that this would not be granted again.
So basically, then you, you were punished, but they were supposed to have drawn from the D.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. C, Support Personnel Action Items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through six.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. C, Support Personnel Action Items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through 10.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. D, Other Action Items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action item, one.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Item number seven on our agenda, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If any in the audience who would like to speak on a non-agenda item, now would be the time to come to the microphone. Item eight, Future Meetings and Events. Our next regular board meeting is on Wednesday, February 16th, anticipating executive session at 6:00. And that's going to be, the presentation is going to be the budget rollout, discussions on transportation, and the bus replacement plan, and technology. And then the meeting after that is on Wednesday, March 2nd, starting at 7:00, anticipating executive session starting at 6:00, and that presentation will be on athletics and operations and maintenance. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, could I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.